Sherry. There we go.
Matt, I'm just trying to get Judy's email here and send her that. I don't know.
I got it.
Have you got it? Even if you want to read it to me, I can.
Okay. Let's try that. Okay, one way or another, I think we'll get going now. It's 4:30. This meeting's till 6:30. Electoral Area D Service and Boundary Configuration Study. So if anyone's in the wrong meeting, you can get off. But hopefully, everybody's here. Some housekeeping. And first off, just a welcome. Well, here's somebody else calling. Okay, just a, I got Ron calling now. Hi, Ron.
Whoops. Can you hear me on the screen?
Yep.
I could not get audio to work. So I called Matt Taylor and he said, hi, Ron. And then it worked. There was.
So you've got audio now?
It's, I can now hear you.
Good. Okay, good stuff.
Yeah, there was a button that I failed to push, apparently.
Tell you, if all problems could be resolved that quickly, we would be. I got one other person. Colleen Simmons, who's going to be asking you as well in a second there, Alan. I see you on another email.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So first off, a big welcome. This is a special meeting. Inspired actually by comments from people on and off the committee to, you know, dig into this a little further and ensure that we've addressed all the questions before the survey goes out. So thank you very much. I really appreciate it that everyone was able to make it. And I note that as we're proceeding through this, I guess maybe we're getting out of the more interesting stuff because we're getting more members of the public participating. So for that, for their benefit, we have an open session at the end of the meeting. So that's where this is a committee meeting. And we welcome comments, thoughts, contributions from the public. But that comes after, after the meeting. Couple of other housekeeping points. The meeting's being recorded. You've already seen that. Please, if you can mute yourself when we're just talking, reduces the paper shuffling sound. Purpose, scope of the project, our focus in this step of a larger incorporation process are focus is on community engagement. Discussing and assessing the residents' thoughts on services and considering and ultimately recommending where a boundary would go if a further step were taken in the incorporation process. And again, this is, you know, step two or three in that larger process, the next step, and there's an off ramp in between now and then, but the next step is incorporation cost benefit assessment. And we'll, we'll come to that in more detail. Recognizing that we've got more people from the public, I do want to make one request. Can we try to ask as many questions as we can, as many as we want? But if we can try to keep them contained, you know, take a couple of minutes, two minutes should be ample to get your point across or your concern. And that'll leave room for comments from the public at the end, but it'll also leave more room for ourselves to be asking questions. Okay, all of that. Approval of the agenda. An agenda was circulated. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda? And then we'll look at any possible changes. Okay, I've got a motion to adopt the agenda from Kay, seconded by David Forst. I want to put one addition on and, and others may have some as well, but many of you will have seen comment about the Columbia Shoe Swap Regional Districts. Blind Bay Sorrento Study. And they had their referendum. It was in Castanet just on the weekend. So I'd like to suggest that as soon as we've gotten through our process update, I'm going to invite Alan to say a few words on that. And David may also want to say some words and we can have a brief discussion and then we'll move on. Is there anything else that anyone else would like to put on or take off? Phyllis?
There was just a couple of points that were in the technical criterion option, options rationale that, that I'd like to address about Vassal Lake.
Hey, I would think that would come in the discussion of point E, Technical Boundary Options Review.
Okay.
Okay. So any other comments or questions? Calling the question, all those in favor of the agenda with that one amendment? Raise your hand, say aye. Okay. Anyone opposed? Seeing, hearing none, that one's carried. But just a reminder, and again, some of the members of the public, I'm not familiar with your names, although I, I know that you participated the last time. I'll just remind you, voting is done by the committee members. And that, that's so it's not, it's not a public open referendum, so to speak. Okay, next point, receipt of minutes for the April 13th meeting. Can I, did everyone receive a copy of those, see those circulated? Honestly, I can't remember if we actually did see them. Bob, do you recall?
Yeah, they hadn't been, I think there'd been a problem with the recording, according to Christie. And they were circulated today as, as they stand. I don't know if there, if there's any other information that needs to be addressed within them or not, but we could always just adopt as, you know, as given to us at this time, I guess.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to adopt this circulated or a motion to table to the next meeting. Okay. What would you like, Kay?
If enough of us have had it, then a motion to adopt the minutes?
Okay. Can I have a seconder? Okay, I've got David Forst seconding. Okay, discussion. Phyllis?
Um, I don't think that the, the minutes really accurately cap, captured the discussion regarding Doc, Director Obrik's participation. There's no reference to it at all in the minutes to that discussion that we had last meeting.
Right. All right, so can I then take your point that additional input is needed, in particular on that agenda item? Kay and David, can I, wait a sec, I've got a comment from Myleene. Go ahead.
It has adjournment at 7:10. It adjourned at 8:10, I believe. And I don't know if, if there's any other little details that have been missed, but I would agree with Phyllis that it needs to be looked at again before it's accepted.
Okay. So can I ask then, David and Kay, would you be in agreement to withdrawing your motion? And we can look at tabling, or do you want to continue with your motion?
I agree to withdraw the motion.
Okay, are you okay with that, David?
I do as well.
Okay. I'll take a motion to table. Phyllis? Made by Phyllis, seconded by Kay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, raise your hands or say aye. Committee members, okay? Anyone opposed? Seeing, hearing none, that motion's carried. Okay. Next item up is process update. And so I'll walk us through this and I just, I just thought it would be useful to remind us all where we're at in this process. So just reading out what's, what's been shared here. We've got the service fact sheets done and we've consulted on those and we've completed them and put them to bed. Shortly after that, we started a public engagement process. Went through five or six, I can't remember, open houses and panel discussion. That public engagement clearly continues now and will continue through to completion of the survey and possibly beyond that. Then we got into the technical analysis and we received the, really the first crack at that last month where we had a couple of documents shared and reviewed by Sherry and Alan. So that technical analysis is complete, barring some corrections, updates, amendments. And now we're into our assessment of that. And we did start that last month. But I think the feeling of a couple of people on the committee that spoke to me and off were that perhaps we needed to dig into that further. And so that's one reason for today's meeting. And so that's really where we're at right now, that committee assessment of the technical analysis that we've been presented. Following that, once we get through that technical analysis and the committee's on board, then we've got the survey of boundaries and that's a survey that results from the technical analysis, like it's, we're trying to get public input on the results of that technical analysis, of that technical assessment. And that's what the survey is designed to do. And then after that, we've got our own committee to look at the results of the survey. See, what did the public think about that technical data that was presented to them? And then lastly, development of a preferred boundary option, which, you know, it could be one of the options we've got in front of us now, it might be, might be something that's slightly different. So the purpose, just to close then, the purpose of this meeting is to actually further the committee review of the technical assessment. And look at proposed revisions in light of public evaluation of that. And additional subjective insights really wouldn't come until after the survey results are in, okay? So comments or questions on where we're at? Okay. Then I will turn it over to Alan for a review of the Blind Bay Sorrento Project and referendum. And then we'll have some questions on that, see if there's any learnings we can get at an early stage like this. And whether there's any learnings that would perhaps be coming back to us later on as well. And then we'll move into the rest of our agenda. Alan, over to you.
Thanks, Matt. Yes, as Matt mentioned earlier, or as the chair mentioned earlier, we had the referendum for the Shred to Blind Bay Corporation study this past weekend on Saturday, the 30th, and it was, as most folks I think probably know, it was quite definitive in its outcome, 88% of people who voted, voted to not incorporate, 12% voted to incorporate. The turnout was quite significant. It was, it was quite impressive, actually, much, much higher than, than local government elections typically generate. So there were 88% again voted not to incorporate. So how do we interpret all that? The best way, I think, to kind of think about this, this study there and in terms of, of what it meant for Shred to Blind Bay and perhaps kind of what we can take away for Okanagan Falls and Area D is, is a couple of things. First of all, Shred to Blind Bay began, the process, the overall incorporation process began with, just as we're doing here with this Governance and Services Study, with the Governance and Services Study for all of CSRD Electoral Area C. That's an area that includes seven distinct communities, two of which are Sorrento and Blind Bay. That study, just as our study is looking at, that study examined existing services, existing governance and looked in at the kind of the issues that residents in the different communities may have or the concerns they may have with those services and with that method of governance. There were six different open houses that we conducted over the course of that initial governance and services study. We also had a community survey, just as we did in this study here. The committee felt very comfortable in the end of that process, at the end of that, that engagement process in particular, the committee felt very confident in saying that all of the communities, except, or sorry, of all of the communities, there were two and only two that were very interested in conducting a study to understand what a decision to incorporate would mean to residents in terms of services, that is, who provides services and service levels, governance and decision making and taxes. So that was really kind of key because at that stage, the decision to kind of proceed was not kind of, there was no interest necessarily showing in incorporating at that point, the interest was in learning about incorporation or what it would mean to the communities. That was what the real interest was expressed in the, in the various engagement exercises. Following that study, then, the, and that was a little bit different than the study in which we're engaged right now, because the one we're doing right now, of course, had governance and services and it also had the boundary analysis. That study was a bit different in that they had the Governance and Services Study pause, then there was a boundary analysis that was done to try to identify a good, the preferred incorporation study area boundary. So that was done, the boundary was put together, made sense, recommended to the province. It made sense for many of the reasons, incidentally, that we'll be talking about later today when we look at our study. Over the course of, of the overall process, very minimal change to that study. And so it proceeded then to go to the incorporation study phase, which is the third phase of that three-stage incorporate, overall incorporation or restructure process. Did quite a bit of detailed analysis, looking at that incorporation option, comparing it to the default option, the, the staying unincorporated option, the remaining as an electoral area. The outcome showed significant projected tax increases for the incorporation option. And those tax impacts were largely related to roads and police. In that particular, in the Shred to Blind Bay incorporation area, there were about 92 kilometers of roads. And policing was important because the, it was clear, and in fact, by the time the referendum happened, the area had exceeded that 5,000 police mark. So that then added to the, the police costs that the community knew would be coming down the line five years from now. Engagement was undertaken as part of the incorporation study. COVID definitely an issue, no doubt about it. We had to do most of our engagement, in fact, almost all of our engagement online. But that said, there was a lot of material sent out to every household in a definitive, fairly lengthy, but very user-friendly overview document and so forth. And there were a number of other mechanisms used, a lot of community, a lot of feedback from the community and identified in the frequently asked question stuff and all those kinds of things. In the end, a significant number of voters, so about 2,300 voters in a community of 5,000. So and not all of those 5,000 are eligible voters, so 2,500 voters, quite significant. And as I noted by a very significant majority decided to, decided that, that they were going to remain unincorporated and decided in essence that they were content with the regional district service provision, they were content with the regional district as the local government for the area. They were content with the shared funding and the decision-making model that was in place. And so that's an entirely legitimate outcome. So when we talk, when we think about whenever we have an outcome like this or a study like this, we kind of, we, we, we tend to kind of go towards terms like failure, success, was it a failure, was it success? And I'm going to suggest that that's not really the right language to think about this kind of study, because the study didn't, I want to just to emphasize, the study didn't set out to incorporate the area. The study set out to understand and, and to have residents make a decision based on that understanding, based on the community's interests, to understand what incorporation would mean. The study provided that information, residents took that in, residents then voted overwhelmingly to stay unincorporated based on the information that they had about those impacts of those of incorporation. So that's, that was the outcome of the study. And now the community can, has decided what is decided and, and it will continue on now as an electric pro area in the, in the Columbia Shoe Swap Regional District. Happy to answer your question, Matt.
All right, I'll just ask maybe if there's other, like, I don't know if the province has anything to, to say on this, David? Anything to add?
I mean, the, the, the province can say, and myself and some other staff members here, the, the vote outcome was certainly decisive. And as Alan mentioned, it's not a failure or a success in terms of they incorporated or not. It was a success regardless of the outcome, because the local decision makers, local residents obviously were passionate about this outcome, right? So as Alan mentioned, the turnout for the last general local election, I believe I was told, about 17% for Electoral Area C. And this outcome of about 2,300 people of the actual numbers of eligible voters was never really quite nailed down. There was the general news releases said there's about 3,000 eligible voters. So about 22, 2,300 people out of 3,000 eligible voters roughly is a really, really good turnout for any level of, of, well, I was going to say election, but at any level of, of vote, whether it's federal, provincial or, or local, it's, it's a really good turnout. Learnings going forward, I would say, is to have the committee, whatever committee it is, balance their own opinions against a vocal no or a vocal yes groups, right, to, to balance those with the overall learnings and findings that are coming through through the survey results and all of the community engagements. I think as Alan also mentioned, COVID, I think one of the things we're all learning from online meetings is that online meetings are never quite as robust or engaging as an in-person meeting. So whenever possible, those in-person discussions, that's when I think everybody can really get a sense of what the feeling in, in that area is with, you know, the open house community area. I think that's, something is really lost when, when it's online. Yes, online allows more people to access, but it's not quite the same when it comes to the, to the engagement. So lessons learned going forward in terms of if you, if arrangements can be made for more, but not more to the point of burnout, but more public engagement in person, then great.
Yeah, Alan, quick question. Just in regards to the tax increase, that was probably the biggest influencing factor, hey? People live, you know, for the moment. They want to understand, you know, what it's going to cost to live in the municipality. Just your perspective on that, I guess, would be interesting. Great presentation. That's really valuable information that you've.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sure, yes. It was, it was, yeah, I, I think that the tax, the tax impact was the deciding factor in this case. There were, and David kind of alluded to this point earlier, it was a very emotional process near the end there. When we had, we're through the engagement process, we had a very vocal no group, largely driven by the tax impact. There were some other factors involved, I think, kind of history of, of decisions that had been made and, and some lack of trust of, of decision makers and decision-making processes. And so I think that there was, there was, there's, there's a lot of emotion around that, but, but we had, we had a very diligent and committed committee, which was, which was incredible. They, they stuck right through three years of this study by the end with all the delays in COVID. It was quite remarkable. And, and I think, you know, our job as a committee was, was to create a a budget, was to kind of do all of the financial analysis to, to allow any new municipality to succeed, if, if that's what the public wanted. That analysis, which the committee scrutinized in considerable detail and then kind of came out with and endorsed ultimately with a few changes. That, that budget, then those, those financial impacts were such that, yes, the property tax impact was, was considerable. And I think that for folks in Columbia Shoe Swap, in Shred to Blind Bay, the, the trade-off of the tax impact versus the localized decision-making authority just didn't make, just didn't do it for folks there. And so they, they decided that, that yes, it was their desire to kind of keep those lower taxes that, that they would realize they would experience through the electoral area governance.
Right, thank you. Alan, Ron, I'm going to ask, I know you've been rubbing shoulders with other directors at other regional districts. You've got your spot at the end and you also contribute during the meetings and that's great, but did you have something specific at this point that you wanted to say relative to this one?
Oh, oh gosh, I could talk for hours and that might offend people and, and I hate offending staff, consultants and chair. So I am fearful to speak freely. And that's not a compliment to those who I just mentioned. Thank you for the invite, Matt. It's much appreciated. Now then I'm watching your body language and thank you for listening. Quick question for Alan. What was the tax impact that was happening in Blind Bay? I'm curious, that's the trade-off. What was their tax analysis on that one?
There was about an 18% increase over the, or the transition period.
Right, and that's, that's quite significant. So I find that interesting. Matt is correct. I've, I've spoken to a lot of people, Lake Country Ward System. I was at Silga last week. I, I did canvas the room. I still can't find a single taker who wants to unincorporate. That includes Lake Country, that includes Sicamoose, that includes West Colona and Clearwater and the list goes on. With respect to feedback, I did speak with my counterpart, Paul Damonuk on, at the LGLA Conference in Richmond on, on Tuesday, April 4, and again, on, on the morning of, I should say, Tuesday, April 5 and, and Wednesday, April 6. And, and on the April 5 meeting with a group at the table, Paul asked me how our process was going and I asked him about his. Paul gave me valuable feedback. He asked questions like how many people were at our panel discussion. Now I, I thank Paul for participating. I also thank Mayor Blackwell from Clearwater and, and, and others I spoke to as well. The second day when I spoke with Paul, I shared with him a suggestion that's been brought to me, Alan, and this suggestion was brought to me after the first two. Well, indeed, the suggestion was probably delivered after the first open house, but I spoke with a person in community before the third open house. And the suggestion was made to me that we could do better on communications. And that's a fascinating observation from community members. Now I spoke about this. from community members. Now, I spoke about this with Matt and Bob. Uh, before this committee was selected, I spoke to it with staff before this committee was selected. Indeed, uh, I spoke to some of this with David Van Omen, the first and time I met him at a meeting, uh, before the committee was selected and I, and I won't go into those details. But with respect to process communications, uh, the suggestion was made to me that we could do better and, 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 uh, so I took that back to others and I'll give that feedback in a minute. The suggestion was made that if we go forward, as, as wonderful as the subject matter experts are on the subject matter that they're expert at, communications is so important. And again, I spoke to this before this committee was struck. I mentioned that, uh, we have, uh, thirty-three percent of our titles don't even have computer connectivity. The sixty-seven percent will do. Many of them don't have good connectivity. And, uh, we have to communicate better. We, we have ways to do that. I, I made suggestions to staff. Those suggestions were not followed. I, I did not get, uh, uh, comfortable. Uh, and again, I was thrilled with Alan. The first time we had a meeting, he said what I said before this committee was struck. He said, you gotta communicate to people. They receive information differently. You have to be respectful and deliver differently. Uh, I think you know that I was disappointed. We did not have the, the, the gym booked for the panel discussion. So communications is so important. And so I said to Paul, and, and this was a hard one. I said to him on Wednesday, April fifth, I said, I should say April sixth, I said, um, this suggestion has been brought to me that we should spend the money and have a consultant on a phase two, somebody who is, uh, good at communications. Get the message out, make sure the people get the information and, uh, work with the team, work with the consultants, whoever they may be on that phase two and, and work with committee and work with others, of course, on the assumption there is a phase two. All that being said, I was stunned because, because Paul had told me the day before they expected bad, bad results. It wasn't looking good and, and he shared his disappointments and, and they were sincere and heartfelt and detailed. So on the second day, when I asked him, I said, I just want to hear your advice. You've gone through it. What can you, what can I learn from you? And he said, oh my gosh. He said, that is such a good idea. He said, it's, you're right. It's worth it. He said, uh, and he talked about, uh, frustrations with, uh, press releases and, you know, they have a, a communications manager. We have a communications coordinator. And he talked about the things that he felt could be done better. But, but without going into detail here and now, he was extremely supportive. Now, I reached out to Jen Ends. When I got the suggestion, when I talked to her, I don't know anybody. Alan, I assume you know Jen and Sherry. I assume you know, uh, Jen and I assume others here don't know, maybe David knows. But, uh, I reached out to her by telephone. I spoke. I also spoke about Facebook and how we can do better and, and there were suggestions there as well. Long story made short, uh, Jen told me, I said, I, 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 she did a great job, twenty-twenty-one keynote speaker, LGLA. She's, I'm going to be there again. I said, wow, I'll be there. I'll talk to you. I, I talked to her twice at that. Uh, I, I talked with, uh, uh, Chris Fields. Do you know Chris Fields, Alan? Chris is a planner out of, uh, Calgary, done a lot of work in Alberta and B.C. Lots of consulting, planning, but also communications. I spent twenty minutes with him and Jen discussing thoughts on how we can do better. Got some interesting feedback, got some emails from him. Uh, this is something that, uh, I think we need to pursue. I had dinner with Mayor Blackwell on Thursday, uh, April seven. Uh, and I had talked with him and, and spent some time with him and I thanked him for participating and, and and, uh, I, I threw the same suggestion to him. And he said, oh my gosh, that is genius. That is genius. That is, that is brilliant. He said, he said, it, it, you're right. He said, the cost, he says, you don't want to go through this a second, a third time. You want to do it right. The first time, he said, it's key, it's key. It's absolutely a great idea. And I talked with others. I called Doug Finn later and I, 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 I got some advice from him, the former mayor of West Colona, and I threw three questions by him. And, and I asked him, uh, you know, uh, about the boundary adjustment that I saw suggested at the last meeting, which I cannot support. And, and we talked about that area, uh, to the west uh, and, and north of the Trestle Bridge. I think the Trestle Bridge has to stay in community. I think those properties you can walk to the, and I've talked to property owners over there. They want to be part of it, but I asked Doug and Doug shared his experience with me and Doug said they believe, uh, and, and Alan, you're probably familiar. They were, they went through some, uh, at the, at the later stages, the province apparently asked them to take on more territory and included a handful of titles that access from Peachland. No good connection. Now they're working on a solution to possibly have that transferred to Peachland eventually. But he said, you do not want to have that kind of separation. It doesn't work well. And of course, upside down, if we have a remainder of a few houses, uh, waterfront, north of the Trestle Bridge being part of Upper Carmi, for example, as a remainder of Area D, how does that make any sense? It, it just doesn't. And, and Doug said, no, that he sure certainly agreed that assessment. I asked him, could we do on a, just this advice on a boundary? On a boundary, uh, on, on, on a vote, could we have a vote, um, on a first question with a boundary and a second, uh, for the other areas, an in or an out, a yes? And, and he said, absolutely. And it's funny because I'm a lawyer, but he told me that was legal. I always love it when people give me legal advice who, who aren't lawyers. And, and I, and I, I thanked him for that and, and, and he gave me some examples. And, and, and we went to a third level, uh, question, and I asked him about the advice on the consultant for communications. And, and I know that, uh, Doug has recommended Alan, speaks well of Alan, likes Alan and, and, and was, I think, sensitive to the question. And I couldn't get a straight answer. And I told Doug I'd be reporting out to the committee given opportunity. And, and Doug, Doug said this to me, he's, he, he wouldn't, he, he was, he was reluctant to answer, so I pressed. And I said, please, I said, Doug, I respect your advice. I, I don't care if you disagree. I don't care if you agree. I just want to hear what you think and why. And, and Doug answered me and he said, I'd be very careful. And I said, why? And he said, you don't want to offend the consultants. He said, that could be received. It could be divisive. It could be, uh, it, it could be a problem. He said, uh, you don't want to do that. He says, you gotta have a team approach. And I said, Doug, I'm all in. I agree. You know, if this proceeded that way, I think any consultant obviously is, is got the same purpose, I would hope, as the consultants and staff at both local and, and provincial government. And that is good process, good information, accurate information. Uh, do a good job and, and I would hope that the consultant, uh, on the other side would be in agreement. And I said, I, I can't imagine we'd ever bring in any consultant who, who on communications who wasn't on board. And I said, if we had a consultant on the, uh, phase two who wasn't on board, that would be a problem. And, and I'll put a question to you in a moment, Alan. You know, would you have a problem working together with a consultant on communications to improve process? Uh, these, these, these are recommendations that come to me from community. I've spoken to many. I, I've spoken to many uh, since the last meeting. I'll, I'll speak further at the end of this meeting. But in terms to the chair's question, have I talked to others in other communities? The answer is yes, a lot at LGLA, at Silga, and I'll continue to do so. And I learn a lot when I speak with them. Uh, Clearwater Mayor, I met him last week. Uh, in nineteen eighty-nine, I think they, not Clearwater, Sicamoose. And nineteen eighty-nine, I asked if they were happy. He said, very happy. Best thing they ever did. I, I said, would you like to unincorporate? He said, no. And I asked him why and he began to tell me, but then he went straight to an interesting number. He said, in the last six years, we received forty million dollars in grants that, that we wouldn't have got. I said, are you telling me if you were unincorporated? He said, not a chance. He said, that's how big a difference it is. And, and he, I mean, I, and I, I, I talked to, uh, people in, in other communities. Uh, I, I've had people, uh, at, at last week more, I, I talked a lot about this. Just imagine how much I talked about this. And, and I, and I had people from other regional districts tell me why this is a good idea. And I would say, well, are you an electoral area? They go, no, I'm, I'm on a municipality. And, and people who are in municipalities agree, uh, with these concerns. And, and so I have done a lot uh, of, uh, talking, a lot of listening, a lot of learning. I think that's real important for us. I care that we have good process. I care that it's fair. I, I agree that it's important to, to let people be informed and then ask them to participate. I, I spoke last meeting. I may speak further to those concerns later in this meeting. But Alan, I'm just going to put the question to you real directly. Would you have a problem working if we had a communications consultant on the team? Would that give you any? And, and I'm asking because Doug gave me the caution. He knows you. He knows you're who we're dealing with. I'm reading between the lines here, but would that offend you? Would you be insulted? Would that be a problem for you?
Okay, we'll, uh, take a quick answer to the question. Then I think we're going to move on to the next agenda item.
We work for the committee, Ron. So whatever the committee decides it wants to do with respect to its personnel cho- choices, we would respect. It is, uh, you, if, if this, this, if the, the, uh, the committee makes a recommendation to proceed to in the corporation study and if the RD OS board accepts that and if the province accepts that, then you'll need to, then the, the, uh, RDOS will need to put together a committee and that committee will then choose its consultants. And whichever consultant you use, you will, uh, presumably get some kind of proposal which outlines the people that they are intended to use on that. And some of those proposals, if there's more than one, may, uh, have a communications consultant as part of the team. And if the committee if the RDOS and then subsequently the committee that makes the final decision on the consultants chooses to go with that, then of course, the consultants on that team would all be part of that. If the, um, of course, there, there's, there'd be budget implications, but that's up to the committee and the province and, uh, and the RDOS.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you, Alan.
Question, a lot of ifs there, but not a clear answer. Would you have a, a problem?
Ron, I think, uh, what I heard was if the terms of
I, I don't need a translator. I just want a clear answer, Alan. I apologize if I misunderstood. My apologies to everybody.
Bob, please. In minutes, can we please get on with the agenda?
Point, point of order, Mr. Chair. Can you have the vice chair please?
Ron. Ron?
Yes.
Bob? Alan?
Let me
Just, just a second, Ron.
I have COVID. I am grumpy. And my apologies to, uh, Mr. Bailey.
Alan? Would you like to try answering the question again? You've been asked and after that we are moving on.
I don't even think it's appropriate to be asking this question, but if we had a, if the committee wanted to use a consultant on communications, go for it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, folks, from here on in, we're going to have a two-minute limit on questions and comments. And, um, yeah, let's get on with the meeting. Um, technical boundary options review, next agenda item. Is that Sherry or?
Yeah, I'll just introduce it, uh, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Let me just, uh, come to it here.
While you're pulling that up, I just want to just remind everybody it is a committee meeting. So I, I noticed, uh, I, I know there's a couple of members of the public on the call. We will get to you at the end of the meeting. That's just the way things are structured. It's a committee meeting and we have a public, uh, session at the end of it. Okay, Alan.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. So we've got, um, the, the, the purpose of tonight's meeting really was to help walk or walk the committee through the thinking as it relates to the different boundary options and to try to explain why we put the options together as they're put together, why they're presented there, what's in, what's out, the options. Uh, as the committee knows, that the, we're presenting here options based on the technical rationales. The process is designed then to, through a survey to get community input on those or feedback on those options. And the committee at the end of the day will consider that feedback against the technical rationales that we provided. We'll go through this evening and then the committee will make its decision accordingly, as it wishes, and we'll put together a recommended boundary to, uh, RDOS as part of its, uh, recommendation and that will ultimately go to the province. So, um, what we're going to talk about here is, uh, we've got it broken into five different sections. The first section we've named as stage one, and we're really talking in stage one about kind of key considerations or the strongest drivers, if you will. The criteria that really help us identify as a first stage where kind of the boundaries may end up going or, or where we think there's a strong rationale for boundaries. Stage two, then we look at what we call kind of the edges. So once we've established kind of the, 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 the general sense of the boundaries, we then look at those edges and we, and we kind of go around the edges on each of the options and we try to identify, we try to question or scrutinize whether those boundaries that we put in place actually continue to make sense from a technical rationale or from a technical perspective, excuse me. We'll then talk about the survey that the committee has already seen some information on, but we'll talk about that survey that, that will go out. We also, uh, look at an information overview mail out that we'll, we'll discuss and then finally get into the schedule of meetings going forward. So on that note, uh, Mr. Chair, I'll pass it to Sherry to help us kind of understand the technical boundary review and the proposed areas there.
Thank you, Alan. Um, yeah, so as Alan, you, you can go to that next slide, Alan. Yeah, um, as, as Alan just sort of outlined, uh, we just want to go through and make sure everyone's comfortable on, on where those boundaries came from and, um, sort of the explanation, uh, sort of a technical explanation on, on why they're being proposed as is right now. Uh, so we're going to start with those areas. Um, so when we're looking at it, the, one of the first things that we do is sort of look at those easy, easy, um, easy options. So the things that we know will be in. Um, so one of them is again, and going back to our criteria, uh, that we've already shared, we have sort of those four categories, the land use and development. Uh, we look at population, service and infrastructure boundaries and assessment. So we'll look at sort of those easy, I'll show you what, uh, we put in to start with. And then we'll, again, as Alan already highlighted, then we'll start looking at those edges and see if we can answer the questions on, on where those boundaries came from. So, um, I, we've tried to illustrate through most of this using as many maps as possible because I think it's easier maybe to explain when, when you see the maps. We have uh, loads of maps behind these ones, but I've tried to pick out some of the ones that, um, hopefully can explain, uh, explain how the, the boundaries came to be. So let's start with Alan and the next slide. So again, when, oh, that looks awfully blurry now. When, um, one of the first things that we look at in the land use and development is again, what those key documents, so the OCP and the Regional Growth Strategy, what they say about growth areas. So the, the little square at the bottom, that's the, uh, Regional Growth Strategy. Uh, it just has a very vague area of Okanagan Falls as a primary growth area and then Skaha Estates and East Side Road as a secondary growth area. Um, I apologize that this map showed up so blurry, but the one, the map on the right is the, um, official community plan and the black areas in the official community plan uh, are the boundaries that show where the growth areas are according to the official community plan. And one of the reasons we do use, um, the OCP as such a guidance document is that it goes through, um, a lot more public process than we have time to do in the scope of this study. So um, these boundaries, um, get a lot more, um, attention at that time. Um, and I know the OCP is a little bit older here, but again, these are the growth boundaries that we have and have, um, enshrined in a, in a OCP bylaw document. So that's one of our, our key considerations that the, at the start is to say, okay, here's, here's where they said the growth should be. Um, so let's, let's include that, like, let's respect what, um, what came out of that uh, analysis. So we, we usually start, that's a good starting point. Uh, Alan, if you can go to the next slide. Okay, these ones are a little bit clearer. So the, these are just, um, zooming in on that OCP document again to look at those boundaries, um, where the, it's maybe harder to where the, it's maybe harder to see the black boundaries that are the growth, but yes, we've included all the areas that are included in the growth boundaries in our options analysis. And the second category that we had in our criteria that we've provided to the committee in the past is, is to look at population and population density. So population density, I mean, we know that we have sort of the five communities that we we met with and we had focus areas on. And a lot of those are, those communities are sort of residential pockets in area D, so Upper Carmi, the East Side Road North area, East Side Road South, Okanagan Falls and then south of Okanagan Falls, so Vasso Lake being one of the concentrations. And this map here just kind of shows they're all at the same scale on this slide. So it shows sort of, you can tell the the darker the concentration, the darker black, the more population density is in that area. So you can tell, for instance, upper, in Upper Carmi, it's not as dense as in the East Side Road North area, Okanagan Falls, Skaha Estates, and then can't quite see because Vasso Lake is is quite small, but it is very dense in that area as well. In that small area of Vasso Lake, there's a, quite a large concentration of the population density in that in that little pocket is quite high. So it's quite obvious from here that those are sort of the areas of population density. And so we've tried to capture those areas, those four areas of population density in our options. Next slide, Alan. So the service and infrastructure boundaries, the first kind of rule of thumb is if it's in a sewer area, it gets included in the municipality. So you don't want to break up your service area boundaries and and provide sewer both inside a municipality and outside. So you want to include all of that area within a municipal jurisdiction. So we took a look at the sewer boundaries and made sure that that was included. And then next slide. Alan, can you actually click on that and bring that map? Well, you can see most of, no, no, just bring the actual map a little bit down on that slide. No, go back. Go backwards, go backwards.
Yeah, just a second here, Sherry. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I don't, yeah, that that's just where it is on the on the slide.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Um, yeah, so this map actually shows the water service areas and it shows the sewer service area underneath it. So the turquoise area is the Okanagan Falls irrigation district area and the red sort of hatched area underneath it is the sewer boundary. So you want to make sure that you're including both of those boundaries when you're drawing the boundaries. The exception, and we'll talk about this later, is the the provincial park, which is on the other side of the river that currently has serviced through Okanagan Falls Irrigation District. And then the other two areas on this map are sorry, Alan, can you go backwards? At the bottom, that dark blue, that's the Sun Valley water air service area and then the brown one there is the Rolling Hills. Thank you. So the other, the other boundary that we look at and we often look at fire service boundaries, although it's not as imperative when you're, it's really important that you don't split a water service boundary or a sewer service boundary. So you want to include those all within your municipality. Fire service is generally preferable to provide the same level of fire service throughout your municipality. So using fire service boundaries is helpful. You can provide service outside the boundaries, but within your municipal boundary, it's, you don't usually have areas that are part, are are serviced and unserviced within your municipal boundary. So you usually want to be providing a consistent level of service for fire within, like providing service to all of your municipality. So we have used the fire service as well, mostly just to make sure that the areas that we are proposing at this stage are included in the fire service area. So it didn't limit a lot of the properties. And then our last main character, main sort of ruling factor for making sure that those properties are within the boundaries is looking at the commercial and industrial uses. So as a municipality, you're gonna have a large residential base. So it's really important to capture commercial and industrial uses. They get charged different tax rates and you want to be ensuring that your community is as diverse as possible for tax purposes. So making sure that areas that are already assessed for commercial and industrial uses are encompassed within those boundaries. So that's what this map shows. The red areas are light industry, the blue are business. So we've tried to include all of those with some slight exceptions. You can see the dump actually on that the landfill on that, that hasn't been included, but are pretty much, almost everything else has been. And there's next slide actually just shows a close-up of the Okanagan Falls area. So I'm not sure if you can see there's, there is the purple, the boundary that we've used right now and it follows the edge of that, of the red, the light industry areas, including the wineries at the bottom. So we've literally almost drawn the boundary exactly around the commercial and industrial areas that exist. So those are the main reasons and I'm just gonna pause there and answer some questions about that because then we'll go through the edges, but those are the easy ones for going through and saying, you know, from a technical perspective, these are things that we would normally include in a municipal boundary. And yeah, so does anyone want to ask questions about that? And then we'll, then we'll talk about when we go back and then start to look at the edges to determine if if they need to be adjusted.
Okay, I for one, I'm really glad to see these maps and the data. Thank you. Any other comments or questions, David?
Yes, one of the considerations is roads and we've heard about adding some extra houses into the boundary. But we were cautioned by mayors in other areas about taking on road networks that don't lead very far. Was that one of the major considerations to the boundaries as well as including efficient road network?
Yes, for sure it is. And I think you'll see some of our, when we go back and look at the edges, that's when we start to get into, you know, because it's, it becomes very hard and and one of the criteria, if you guys remember back, is trying not to create orphan roads as well. So as you start to add properties to the edge, if you've just now included a little bit of a road, you know, what will that mean for servicing implications? So we, we've considered, the roads end up being in even bigger consideration when we start to look at the edges. But yes, that's, that is definitely one of them and and we'll be speaking to that as we go through the edges as well. But roads is always, yeah, it's always the biggest concern because of the cost of maintaining those roads.
Matt, Kelvin here.
Right. Kelvin, we're supposed to be taking input from the public at the end.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah.
Can you, can you hold it till then? Is that like, that's the way the meeting's structured? Yeah, okay.
That's fine.
Thank you, Kelvin. The comments or questions? Okay, keep going.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, um, yeah, go back one. And so, so then we start to look at some of, some of the edges and and not only the edges, but some of the in-between areas, you know, once we've got those growth areas, what are the areas in between that we can use to connect those areas and what are the implications for including some of it or excluding some of it? And one of the criteria that we've talked about in the past is about farm class. So we, we've talked about trying to avoid including agricultural land reserve. And in this case, given the number of farms that we've included, we haven't done a great job of avoiding ALR, but not all ALR is farm class. So there's farm class and there's also, one of the reasons we've captured so much ALR lands in our boundaries is because a lot of those ALR lands also have commercial and industrial assessment that we would like to capture. So farm class properties particularly, and we've spoken to this a little bit in the past, but they have a tax exemption on their residential dwelling. So if you have farm class status, you have a, an exemption on your residential dwelling that once you're included within a municipality, that exemption goes away even before any other analysis of how the costs may change in incorporation. Once you are within the boundaries of a municipality, they no longer have that exemption on their residential dwelling. So that exemption currently, when they're not in a municipality, covers the provincial rural rate. So in 2021, that was point four or five per thousand assessed value. So we can look at what that would mean or people can look at their own tax notices and figure out what that exemption means to them. But it, it can be fairly significant, obviously depending on the value of your own residence. But if you have a fairly expensive home, then then it's, you know, it can be three or $400. And we've done that analysis for a lot of the farm properties sort of on the edges to see what that implication would be for them. But it's the main reason why we usually try to exclude ALR farm class properties from from a technical perspective to avoid the tax impacts for those properties. Alan, if you can move forward. So here is the properties that are assessed with farm class. Just to show you, give you an idea. So some of those obviously are being included within the boundary. But we try to exclude and you'll think back to when we looked at, if you look at the boundary on the right or the map on the right, some of those properties again have that overlying industrial and commercial assessment base, which is why we're including them. But when they don't have that, we try and keep them out because of the tax impacts on them. Next map. So we want to use one, an area as an example. So again, we've looked at this boundary area quite closely in McLean Creek. So that's the area that we've shown sort of this, this cluster just on the outside of the boundary. So we looked at this area. There's about thirty properties within there and fifteen of them currently have farm class status. So we looked at what the impacts would be for those properties again, notwithstanding that the incorporation analysis would potentially have other tax increases or temp, tax implications. It might not be increases, but the tax impact of just losing that exemption for those properties in this particular area ranges from property to property based on their residential building value, but it would range from $46 to $477 again for those, that little group of thirty properties there. So that's one of the things and you can see again that we've included the properties that have the underlying commercial and industrial assessment and that's sort of where that boundary came from. That's, that's there. Alan, next.
And maybe just to, and just to add a little point, if I could, Sherry, when you talk about the underlying assessment, just so everybody understands that that properties can have more than one assessment, a B C assessment can, can assign more than one class to a property. And so in the, in the map on the left there, we see that we've got some light industry there in the, in the dark red, which is kind of underlying the farm status as well or in addition to the farm status. And that's, that's significant.
And then if you just click to the next, I think, oh, no, I haven't, sir. So that, yeah, so that was the main for, for that particular, sorry, if you can just go back, Alan, sorry. Suggested we click forward too quickly. So that's, that's where that boundary recommendation came from, looking at yes, where, where we can draw the line where we're not including those farm properties, but still capturing the ones that have some other industrial and commercial impacts. So for you, one of the other factors that we used in determining what that edge is, is there's quite a few properties that are owned by the Nature's Trust of B C, it's conservation organization and obviously if it's a conservation property ownership, then the purpose is to conserve it for future and not develop it, which is, which is great. But it's also from a municipal perspective, if you have properties within your boundary that are conservation properties, they do also do not add to the tax base because they don't pay taxes. And so we've excluded those from where we could. There are some cases where we included conservation properties because you've included that road. So you need to make sure that that road is consistently serviced. But here's one example, right at the top of the East Side Road North area, there's that little area. Alan, go back. Yeah, so this conservation property ownership here includes an area that was actually in the growth boundary in the OCP, but we've excluded it because again, it's owned by the conservation, the Nature's Trust. Okay, now you can go to the next one. Thank you. So these are all properties in the red that are owned by the Nature's Trust. So we have tried to exclude most of them, but as I mentioned, we have included some of them, especially in the, in the area just south of Okanagan Falls. When we've included the road and its conservation area on both sides of the road, we still have to include those properties because we want that road to be serviced and you can't have a portion of a road in the middle of it that isn't, is, you're, you're expecting the province to come and maintain a portion of the road in the middle of your municipality. So but other than that, we've tried to avoid those. Another area that we wanted to go through to make sure everyone was clear on where the boundary suggestions were coming from is the area west of of the river. So we've used the river as the boundary, which is the same boundary that was, it's consistent with the growth boundary that's provided in the OCP. So the area west of the river, there's about 426 hectares there. There's eighteen parcels that are to the west of the river and included currently in area D. Four of those are farm class. Five of them are provincial-owned parcels and there's ten residences in that area. If you can go down. So we've tried to show, so the OCP map, again, the green area refers to the provincially-owned portion of the, there's a provincial park there as well as some of the conservation areas that are shown there. Those are also provincially-owned, both to the south on Green Lake Road and a little bit to the north on Old Kalibon Road. And then I've also got a snippet of the farm class assessment. That's the map on the right there. So that big parcel along at the very edge of the, the, the map there, that's all farm class as well as some to the north as well. So yeah, there's that. So there are a few properties in there, obviously in the north on Old Kalibon Road and then at the very southern end. So one of the main reasons of excluding, A, there's not a lot of properties over there. There's provincial park that we are hoping not to take in partly because it's a provincial park and doesn't have any tax revenues associated, but also because of the relationship with the First Nations there. Anytime a boundary takes in provincial crown lands, especially provincial parks, consultation and there's always consultation with First Nations even when any boundary is created. But there's particular sensitivity around this particular provincial park because it is managed by the First Nations. There's campground there. So we were cautioned about including it. Yes, it sometimes will just take the process much longer if there are additional consultations that are needed. There are, there are some properties at the very south end. You can tell, yeah, that's right. Thank you, Alan. And a part of the problem with wanting to include those is the length of the road, as David Forst highlighted earlier. So the length of the road that you're including in order to service the three properties that are down there. So that's really the, the area west of the river has problems in terms of the length of roads and servicing for the very few properties and the very few assessments that's over there. We do do a bit of an analysis on what the road lengths are versus the assessment that you would get for that. There's kind of a rule of thumb on what the roads cost. And yeah, whether, whether the properties over there would be able to sort of pay their way or pay for the roads that are over there to get to those properties. So that's So that's some of the reasons why those properties haven't been recommended at this point. Again, the survey, if we heard that, if the committee heard that everyone on that side was interested in being included, maybe that's something that the committee wants to consider. But using the river as a rationale for everything west of it is out is sort of a stronger position for rather than, you know, including one or two on the other side. So we thought we would go with the growth boundary that was recommended in the O C P using the river. And, yeah, that's kind of the, some of the, some of the reasons why we stuck with that boundary. The the bridge crossing is also a bit of an issue. It's usually an issue if the municipality would be paying for the bridge. In this case, the bridge is actually owned by the province, so you wouldn't be responsible. The municipality wouldn't be responsible for the upkeep of the bridge, at least, at least not right now anyway. This just, these two maps just kind of should highlight the the few properties that are there. So on the left, we can see the the collection of, I think it's four residences, five properties, maybe on Old Kalibon Road. And then on the right, you can see the few properties that are at the bottom there that are that that could be included on Green Lake Road. And then the other edge that we wanted to go through was the edge between the growth areas of Skaha Estates and Heritage Hills, Lake Shore Highlands Vintage Views area. So there, there is quite a bit of area in between these two that is mostly agricultural land, farmland. So we wanted to look at that edge, the edge to the very north, which we've already referred to, is in the conservation area. So that's what we use as our northern edge of that community. Just to the east, there is an area that's in the Provincial Wildlife Trust, so we've excluded that. There is a community there, a strata community, you can see all the little boxes, the little, yeah, separate boxes on the on the right side there that are, yeah, that's where they are. Those are kind of interesting strata properties. Some of the houses are actually worth quite a bit in there, so we were curious about whether to include some of those, but they're not in the fire service area. So in that area, we went with the fire service boundary. Again, in the the farm area between the two, there are some properties in there that are wineries and do have commercial assessment and industrial assessment as well, so we've captured those. If you can just go to the next slide, Alan, I think we show. Some of the, so there's the fire service boundary is the one with the green. The red and the blue shows the commercial and industrial areas that we've included. And then there's a, the, at the very southern tip, there's a a large parcel in between Skaha and Parsons Road that we have excluded. That's the start of McLean Creek Road. And so one of the reasons we were excluding that property is partly because it's McLean Creek Road and it continues on, and if the province is the one looking after that road the rest of the way, then it sort of makes sense for them to do the entire length of that road. That area is also, this green and pink map is the environmental development permit areas. So it's areas that have environmental sensitivity. So again, an area that's probably not planned for significant growth. So that's why that that we excluded that one parcel at the bottom there. Alan, can you just click on it? There's, there we go. So the yeah, sensitive environment. And then on the left here, that's the O C P designations in there. And again, they weren't, the area that we excluded was not designated for residential development anyway, except for there is a tiny little parcel there off East Side Road that was. Next slide. Okay, so you can go, go back. So that's our explanation of some of the edges. Happy to answer questions, maybe pull up a map or two that we haven't provided. Anything to help go through where the edges were.
Hey, Phyllis.
Okay, thank you. That's a lot of information to take in. And really, really appreciate that so much to be considered. It's really kind of mind boggling. I just wanted to touch a little bit on a couple of things that were in the technical criteria and options rationale, just a little bit around language. And I know that we're not really trying to be positive or negative, sell this to anybody in either way. But but just around the discussion, what in the mention of Vassal Lake. You know, there are actually four public access points to Vassal Lake. And my, my, my understanding from doing the reading was that it sounded like there really wasn't any positives to having Vassal Lake be part of the consideration. But I think like tourism really is a major contributor to to locally and also provincially. And, you know, I think it's it's also very attractive to have a lake or water source within a municipality because it does bring people into your community, especially, you know, in this area of Okanagan where we are so tourism oriented. And I was just wondering maybe if there's a way that we could do something around the language a little bit to just make it a little bit, a little bit more positive, not, you know, like I say, we're not selling it. But that being said, it just seemed to me when I read this that it sounded like having Vassal Lake be considered would be a drain because, you know, it says, wouldn't generate any municipal tax revenues. You know, you know, does not contribute to the tax base. And and I think that when you have tourism, and you know, this is a, we've been a bird sanctuary for over 80 years. You know, we're really distinctive because we're a lake that doesn't allow any power boats on it. That's very positive, you know, and that's, that's really why I live here is because that drew me to this location. So I think there is, there are a lot of positives and maybe it's not, you know, residential tax assessment money that comes into the community, but there are people, you know, buying gas and accommodations and meals and services and groceries, and there's a lot of positives. So I just hope maybe we can somehow tweak that a little bit.
Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you for making that point. And, yeah, it does, it does remind us that we are looking at it through a very, you know, looking at the criteria that we are and not really going beyond that to talk about, yeah, some of the mainly economic development drivers. We do mention, obviously, the, those that are providing commercial and industrial tax base. But you're right, there are other uses that bring people to the area and and reasons why they might stay. And, yeah, just recreational benefits and those kind of things. I guess one of the, one of the things from a drawing a municipality perspective, those assets are there regardless. So, you know, a municipality actually might benefit from the fact that Vassal Lake is there, whether or not they're part of, you know what I mean, Vassal Lake will still bring those people in and generate those great benefits for people living, even if the municipal boundary doesn't include them. But yes, I, sorry, point taken, and and so I wouldn't, yes, I, I, I don't mean to suggest that it's a negative drain. And in fact, I think the reason why, from a technical perspective, Vassal Lake is in there is because it actually isn't a financial drain on the municipality because, because of that pocket. Whereas, you know, when we, when we were talking about Green Lake Road, having a long road that captures three extra properties that have some assessment base, but that assessment base doesn't even cover the road to get there. Vassal Lake's kind of the opposite of that, you know, the road to get there is almost all provincial highway, which you aren't paying for regardless, or you do just in other ways. But the pocket that at the end of that road has a fairly significant tax base that makes it so it isn't actually a drain on the rest of the municipality, which is why I think it's sort of in there as a, hey, let's hear what this community thinks, whether they want to be in or out, because we don't have, if it was going to be a drain, I think we wouldn't be recommending it from a technical perspective. It doesn't mean that the committee wouldn't say, hey, yeah, we hear what people are saying down here. And even if we think it's a bit of a drain, we still want to include them in the boundary. I mean, that's totally a valid response to what they hear from the community. But from a technical perspective, if we thought it was going to be a drain, it probably wouldn't be in the boundary.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I appreciate that. My understanding was that they, these documents do go out to, like, it'll be a mail out to all of the people who live here, right?
So The the overview is, yeah, is that where the language that you?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so that's where, you know, I I want other people to think, hmm, maybe this is a possibility for us to include Vassal.
So a couple of suggestions in terms of attributes that you might be able to work in there, Sherry.
Okay, yes.
Within, you know, provided that they still meet, they can be worked into those technical criteria. Phyllis, another question?
No, that's everything. Thank you very much.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else questions, Alan?
Can I just make a point, Mr. Chair? Yeah, just one of the, one of the points that was raised or that has been raised in the past, I guess, the concern that, well, if the boundary is drawn here or there, if we leave kind of a few properties out, for example, on the west side of the bridge, we leave a few properties out, what happens then? Because, you know, area D, as we know it today, would be split and those, that would be kind of an orphaned part of the area D. I think it's important to, for the committee to understand that, that whatever rec, whatever boundary it ultimately recommends. And and then if that goes forward to to incorporation, and if that were successful, then one of the things, and maybe David can comment on this as well, but one, but the province then would need to look at the entire electoral, whatever's left over in the electoral area and and kind of compare and kind of find out where it is. And then possibly even start to look at, how do we rationalize now the rural area to make sure that we don't have an orphaned part of area D here, or what was today area D, those kinds of things. And so it's all of those kinds of areas that that the committee may be concerned about leaving out and kind of leaving as orphan areas, those would be, through the province would be kind of possibly amalgamated with a different electoral area or because all those, all those boundaries of the remaining areas would be rationalized.
I'll put forward, okay, Myleene?
I'm just wondering about the line between Okanagan Falls and Skaha Estates. Where specifically is that? Does that include the cliff jumping area? Where's that line? Is Race It Way in Skaha Estates? Are the properties on the cliff, Skaha Estates? I I couldn't tell, maybe I couldn't zoom in close enough. Thank you.
Go to, Alan, is it easier if I share my screen? Just a second, let me find.
Yeah, why don't you do that, Sherry? I'll just make sure that you've got permission to do that there. And, yeah, there we go.
Let me just see if I'm going to pull up a map that, let me find one that shows that area.
So if I can just ask a question, clarification, while you're
Yeah.
The technical analysis piece that had all the dots in it, that is not at this point then going out with the survey, correct?
That's correct.
Good, good. Just from my perspective, it was kind of subjective and confusing and conveyed a message that, you know, if you scored, added up all the dots, that an answer would pop out. And from my perspective, hopefully people will, if if they do look at that, they'd read the words that are there and and just start thinking about what that means. And I I don't think an answer pops out. And if it does, it's going to be a different answer for many people that are reading it. Different folks are going to get different, different answers. Okay, that was a comment, and now you've got your map. Go ahead.
Okay, so Myleene, does this one show it? Or you're wondering about south of this one, which is shown up here, this is where?
I think it does show that the cliff jumping area would be part of Skaha Estates.
Okay.
I think.
I don't, I don't, I don't know where the cliff jumping area is, to be fair.
Little nodular, yeah, down.
Just a little lower, right there.
Right where the cursor is.
There.
Yes, so so in the, I mean, yeah, this is partly the growth area boundary. And it also encompasses all of the improvement district, the the water area, so. Yeah. Do you have any questions about where the rest of that boundary goes or?
So that was your question, Myleene, just straight up.
Just where is it?
Yeah, I just couldn't see it. So, yeah, no, that makes sense where where it is there. Yep, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I've got another question unless I don't see any other hands up. We got to these four options, and I guess we are asking another option. But you know, do we, do we ask the question, whole area? Or do we just assume, depending on people's responses, whether whole area would make any sense? And or or do you just say, technical assessment doesn't justify whole area?
Well, from my perspective, yes, technical assessment doesn't justify a whole area. But I think, and when we start to talk about the survey, we can talk about, we've added a question for those who are outside. And, yeah, I mean, if you heard overwhelmingly from a certain area, maybe that would cause the committee to choose to go in a different direction and want to include more. But from a technical assessment, yeah, I mean, if you're talking upper Carmi in particular, you know, that the access, the fact that you go through another municipality to get to it, and the way it's sort of orphaned that way, never mind the length of road and the provincial park and the other protected areas in between there, you know. Yeah, I don't, we don't have the, the technical rationale for including it. But that doesn't mean that the committee couldn't choose to go down that route if that, if that's what they heard, but
But that would be
At this point, we don't have this, yeah.
That's not popping out from the technical assessment, that may pop out from the survey.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Ron, you've got a question? Question, comment, shoot.
Yes, I'm so sorry I was slow unmuting, Mr. Chair. And yes, I do have a question, and thank you very much. I may have had difficulty understanding, Sherry. My question is specific to the boundary review you just did and specific to the Tressel Bridge and and those properties that are on on the north end of that bridge. And the I don't even know how many titles there are there, so my question has parts, how many titles? I have spoken to people there, but but I I'm curious if you could provide the explanation. I've lost track. What is the reason for those areas not being within the boundary?
Yep, and I can go back to that.
Go back to the map.
Do you want me to put the slides up or?
Sure, Alan, actually. Or or I can. So it's just a combination of things, I think. One is that, yeah, we've relied on the growth boundary, which just goes to the end of the water. There are 18 titles on the other side. I think 10, five of them are, oh, there we are, sorry, five of them are Crown Provincial. Four of them are proper, are farm class, including sort of the biggest one there. So 88% of the land area that's, that's on the other side of the river is actually in that farm class, which would have the tax implications, so they they would lose their tax exemption. But there are 10 residences over there, I think, six of them are, I think, are to the north there. And then there's another four that are further down Green Lake Road. Yeah, and then on the next slide, I think. Yeah, so they. They don't, they aren't involved in any water or sewer services. They aren't in the growth boundary. So if we're going to include them, even though they aren't in any of those, I think we're looking for stronger rationale on why we would include them. And they also, the assessment that you would get from including them doesn't pay for the roads that you would pay for to get there. So that was kind of the, the largest, the, the last strike against why, why we would suggest that they be included at this point.
Yeah, understood your last strike comment very well. Thank you. But, but I have a clarification question because I still don't understand. I'm seeing this a little bit different and I'm hoping you could help. The Tressel Bridge connects our area with properties that are waterfront. And those properties are all east and north of the ninety-seven. Now there's properties that are south and west of ninety-seven. And I'm trying to get clarification on the distinction between those properties that are north and. East of ninety-seven. So first question, how many are there? And, and because I'm trying to get that sorted out and I, I still don't have a, a clear understanding. But secondly, I have spoken to people who live there since our last meeting. And they have strong, strong connection. They, 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 people I've talked to have been there over sixty years. Feel part of the community. They're doctors in the community. They shop in the community. They want to be involved in the community. Waterfront taxes are enormous. No real road there to speak of. So you're, 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 what did, what did you call that? Last strike or something? Whatever that colorful language was, it may not apply to those properties. So I really want to drill down deeper on the distinction between those two different, very distinctly different. Places. One, one is, is on the. East and north of the highway, the other on the south and the west. I still don't have understanding and that's probably my fault. When we look at the Tressel Bridge, just by way of information for the consultants and the committee. There is a license of occupation. And if the Tressel Bridge remains within a municipal boundary, and I think that's what we're talking about. I think the Tressel Bridge is an iconic part of the community. There is. From staff, I understand there are efforts being made to download that cost regardless. Now, now that may be a factor, but under that license of occupation, there, there, and use, there, I mean, the KBR Trail, this is a big deal. This is not a small thing. This bridge is not a small thing. Who has control over it? It's something that needs proper consideration. But when we look at the nexus of those property taxpayers. Long, long time members of O.K. Falls, that's where they identify. There are some real compelling reasons to look closely at this more closely than I think has been looked so far. And so I, I really, and, 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 you know, I know what the, I know what the taxes are. I know what the services cost, the, the, the garbage pickup and the fire protective there. You know, you, you've got properties there that are, that are way above average, way, way above average. So, so on that cost ratio, which I, I, I find interesting at times because that's an important consideration. And we're, we're kind of slippery on when we do and don't talk about cost in this first phase process. I have concerns about that, but, but specific, specific to those two areas. I, 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 I've got some loose understanding, eighteen total, five ground, four farm class, ten residential. I just want to break it down. How many are north and east of ninety-seven? How many are south and west? And is there a distinction between those two groups? And I think there might be, but I, I could be wrong.
Alan, can you go to the, the next, the next slide that shows the, yeah, so. The map that shows the areas, the one on the left shows the parcels that are. Up there, so they, I believe, and I have each one itemized. Let me just look on my. Get my map, one, two, three, four, five. So there's five residences that are off, accessed off Old Colleiden Road. Actually, I think one of them's access to stop the highway there, but there's Old Colleiden Road and then there's a cul-de-sac that comes off of it. That provides access to the one, let me, oh, actually, sorry. One of them, the lot goes on both sides of that road. So one, two, three. There's four residential properties there and then there's one, two. Three that are right near the Tressel Bridge that actually go on either side of the, one of them goes on either side of the highway. So that's what that particular slide is intended to show is those areas. And I have the assessment for each of them. Yeah, and, and so the road length that provides access to those areas is the portion of Old Colleiden Road and then the, the cul-de-sac there. And I have still, the length of that area is being, it's point six, three kilometers of road to service them.
Okay, and, and I, I'm unclear if that's three, four or five properties. I'm sorry, but I'm, I have a headache and I'm having difficulty comprehending.
That's okay. Let me just make sure. Here, Alan, I'm just gonna, can I just share my screen, Alan?
Yep, you bet.
And, and let me interrupt quickly. At the board table, Director Monteith and I have had difficulty getting a straight answer to this question over three years. We were both confused from miscommunications on information. I was surprised when I learned the Tressel Bridge was in area D because the first information I had, it was not. This is not a well-understood issue for me. And I've asked the question before more than once, so it's not, it's not an easy answer for me to comprehend.
Okay, so can you see my, the screen now? Can you see the, I've got the B C, this is the B C assessment website, which anyone can go on and take a look at the, these properties. But so we have one residential property there, one, two. Three. Four. Those four are there. If you also mean to include the area down here, then there's a couple more.
Is it four, or one? I, I know the house that's there, the White House, I know.
This one's, so this.
On the waterfront, yeah.
There's a, there's a parcel here that's vacant.
Okay, so nothing, but that's where.
Okay, there is a house and then that's also vacant.
Okay, and in driving by, you can't tell that it's three.
Yeah, exactly.
You're talking seven. I've heard three, four, five and seven. So final answer is seven?
Let me just here, just a second. That's a farm class property, one. Two. Three. Four. Five, six, seven, so seven.
Yeah.
Seven total properties, two of which are vacant.
Yeah, that property tax on that beautiful little point, that, those are quite high, I know that.
Yeah.
You have a number on that or not, not, not? Anyhow, the owners of that property, I've talked to two out of the seven, I guess, and I don't know. I can talk to all seven, it's not that hard, but the two I've spoken to, that's four, four people. Strongly, strongly want to be included within this boundary that includes O.K. Falls. They, they, I can go into much more detail, but I, I just can't say that strong, loud enough, the, the feedback I've had. Overwhelmingly in favor. As, as far as the Green Lake Road, so you said eighteen total. So do we take seven off? Does that mean the remainder eleven are south and west?
No, there's still like one, like there's some bigger properties here.
So how many are south and west?
Are you talking residences or are you talking?
I'm, I'm. Both, I, I. The detail.
Yeah, so. Eighteen includes all of the ones in area D, including the seven, plus there's a few more up this way, right? There's that one. And that one, so now you're at nine, this big one here is ten, so there would be. Eight more, couple of which are provincially owned. So residences down here, I think there are two there. One there. And I think there is one right here.
All right, so on that strip, south of ninety-seven, west of the water.
Four residences.
Yeah, there's four residences?
Yeah.
And how many titles all in?
Eleven. Oh, no, not eleven, sorry.
So it is, so the math of eighteen minus seven works, it's eleven.
Well, eleven, but two of those are, are, are up higher, right? They're not, two of them are right here, so that's nine there, so there's about nine, nine.
Okay, they're, they're, they're west of the highway.
Well, one of them's north of.
Highway, they're, they're not east. Yeah, and, and, and your number one, I don't know if it was a strikeout pitch or what you called it, was the road, the road on that side.
It's not that number one, it's just we're, when, when we've, when we've gone through all the boundaries that we were talking about, you know, does it have services? Is it in the growth boundary? All of those. If you didn't make that first cut, then we're looking for an extra reason on why we would include you. So some of the things that we look at, at that point are, you know, what is the cost of including you versus your assessment? And is that, is it more for the road than, than your assessment is going to add? So that's just one of the things that we looked at and considered.
So, so, so it's only one, but you were saying it was a significant one? The road.
It, it's one of the reasons we would, yes, that like, if, if we saw that it was, yeah, in ass, assessment for the amount of roads and it's kind of a. Well, it's not, it's no longer a strike against you. Now, sure, why not include it in sort of thing?
Yeah, and, and I really, I really care to hear the reasons too. That's why I'm asking the question.
No, no, I, I appreciate that because we just need to have, you know, if it doesn't line up with all the first reasons why we would recommend something, then there has to be something to suggest why we would include it. Right? So that's what we look for.
I've got a, a number of people saying they have to leave at six thirty.
Yes, myself included.
Ah, well, there we are. So can I ask if there's more questions? This is good, but I think we have to. Also move on. Okay. So. Questions on survey? Updated material?
Yeah, I'll just add on that, that we did. So we did incorporate one other question into the survey. And we did also incorporate a few extra areas when we have the question that asks of. What area best describes where you live and or own property? We've included more areas in that to make it easier when we get responses to understand exactly where people are, are from. And then we added a question on, for those who aren't included. And then the only other update on there that we had talked about at our last meeting about. Whether there might be an interactive map that allows you to enter your address and find out if you are in the boundary or out. That has been prepared and so that will be ready and we'll make that available when the survey goes out, so people can look that up. But yes, we are also hoping for any comments that people have in addition to Phyllis's. On the overview that we're proposing to send out with the mail out of the survey.
Okay, floor is open for questions.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Sorry, who's that?
It's Kurt Hebert.
Okay, go ahead, Kurt.
Hi, hey, I'm, I really have to apologize. I just got home from work. I assumed this meeting was at six o'clock. And, and then I was on my way to O.K. Falls to join it in person, had to turn around, come back. I apologize for not being able to attend this meeting in person or, and listen to everything that had to be said tonight. But I did have a considerable list of things I want to bring up. And I feel like a duck out of water right now, but I do need to get them out on the meeting floor. Prior to going much further in this process. And so I apologize. And Chair, if you would allow me just a couple minutes to bring up a few points.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First of all. I spent some time reviewing our original documentation on the purpose of this steering committee. And the democratic process, the process to involve everybody in all neighborhoods in, in these decisions. And I'm a little bit disappointed in the process. I'd like to take about a thousand foot view, just looking down on everything right now. Everybody in the room seems to have a bit of an agenda. All of us committee members were kind of brought into this. And some with more experience than others with the regional district and that's fine. That's kind of how we get community inclusion. But it's come to my attention over the period of these meetings. And I've really appreciated that we've had the opportunity to go and review these meetings. From the regional district's website and spend some time just, you know, slowly going through them and digesting the information. Because it's really been some really interesting information. But it seemed to have turned out to be most, more like a local government's. Governance one-on-one course in university, rather than focusing on the boundary issues and kind of the issues at hand. Right from the very start, we hired a contractor to, and no disrespect here, to do a fantastic job as they've done so far. However, I, I. I reviewed the RFP right off the bat. And I work in the field of engineering and so I do RFPs and RFQs regularly. And so when I did my breakdown on the RFP and I broke down, you know, what they were proposing to offer and what the corp, the cost was per item. And when I did my breakdown and all of these RFPs. Turn out that when you review them, you can see that there's a very consistent multiplier to every line item. And so they're going to say these are our costs and we're going to add our multiplier. This is standard in the industry. And I wasn't comfortable with the multiplier that was applied to this. I know that our contractors have done this job, even in just listening to the news in the last couple of days and what's happened north of us here. And kind of the lackluster response to that incorporation study. I noticed that this was a cookie cutter event. They've done this a number of times, but they've charged us full pop for it. And I really wanted to be involved in the negotiation prior to selecting the contractor. Now, in private industry, what we do is we send out a RFP and Bid B C is wonderful. I mean, it's a great place to just kind of billboard what you're doing. But in private industry, I would have been fired right off the bat for not. Consulting all other contractors in the province personally. And saying, listen, we threw something up on Bid B C and we're really interested to hear your perspective. Have you looked at the board? Do you have interest in contributing to this process? That wasn't done. Christie didn't do that. So what we ended up with was somebody that the regional district was very comfortable in hiring because they have a track record. But it may not have focused directly on some of the issues that pertain to our community. I also know. Right off the bat, I had a selection for Chair. It was Kate, Kate Medlin. I'm going to be right up front with that and my gut feeling was correct. I would have preferred to have nominated Kate Medlin for Chair. She has a really interesting history and a really interesting. Experience and I would have preferred that. When I look back on this, I can see that we are a steering committee, but we were steered. We were considerably steered. There's an exclusion of Doug Lychek in this board that just shocked me right off the bat. Doug has more experience than most people in this group. And. I just kind of let things float from the beginning. I kind of voiced my opinion from the very start and then I've taken notes along the way. And I'm, I'm not happy with where things have gone. The lack of proactive search for. Uh, the lack of proactive search for suitable contractor, uh, through BidBC, this is just a lazy way out compared to a private industry methods where you personally, no, I'm going to finish my, I'm sorry.
Um, all right, Kurt, it's just we're we're out of time, people are going to be leaving shortly, and we're talking about stuff that's this needs miles behind.
I know, um, so, um, you know, um, Matt and Bob were selected, they've been very involved from the very beginning with Christie, um, I think that she was quite happy to have, uh, the Chair and Vice Chair take place. So, just to cut this short, thank you, Matt, um, for, uh, bringing up that we're short on time. This affects everybody in Area D. I really appreciate Ron's interpretation of not only how local governance works, but how it's applied to our local governance. And I've been disappointed that he's been cut off at times because he's really had some good contribution. Uh, the one thing that is really important to me, and maybe I'm, uh, overstepping my bounds here, and maybe I missed the conversation earlier, but the two-tiered referendum on this is everybody in Area D in favor of O'Kay Falls becoming, uh, a municipality. That affects all of us. When O'Kay Falls steps aside and says we want to be our own municipality, um, it affects me in Upper Carmi. Uh, we had some very basic things in Upper Carmi that were important to us, Selican, uh, joining the city of Penticton. These things weren't mentioned, and they're very, uh, they're very pivotal to our community. And so I'm really hoping that what I missed is that we're going to do this two-tiered referendum. And, uh, are we all in favor? And if we are all in favor, which communities are interested in, um, in, uh, joining, uh, the township of O'Kay Falls in moving forward? Um, the biggest thing for me, and I'll just get this out of the way, and I can probably step aside. The biggest thing for me is I understand the regional district's perspective, they would love to unload O'Kay Falls, that is a big cost for the regional district. They would love them to be self-governed. However, what you're forgetting is that the east side of the lake and Upper Carmi on average are well over a million dollars apiece per properties. And so the tax contribution when O'Kay Falls steps aside and becomes a municipality is going to be missing a huge chunk of money. I understand that the regional district would love, uh, to hold on to that mill rate and keep it for themselves and like let O'Kay Falls fend for themselves. However, that's not practical for O'Kay Falls as a municipality. You need diversity, I come from a farming family, and so I know that when you plant crops, you don't just plant corn. You plant corn, you plant potatoes, and you plant beans, because one of those crops is going to fail any given year. And the next year, you're going to need to rely on the income that you overlooked by not planting those crops. And so what I'm saying is that I believe that, uh, Upper Carmi has something to gain from incorporation of O'Kay Falls, and, uh, RDOS has something to lose in our mill rate disappearing from their budget. So they have to cut costs. If we looked at, we've got, what, nine, ten, uh, regions in, uh, and, uh, Southern Okanagan? Um, when we pull out one of those, yeah, they're going to lose probably greater than ten percent of their tax revenue if the whole of Area D steps out. They would love it if just O'Kay Falls alone would walk away, and they could hold on to Upper Carmi and the east side of Skaha Lake. And I think that those in O'Kay Falls, Matt and Bob, hello, um, you're overlooking something without our tax base, you're not as viable. You really are not. And so, um, I feel terrible about stepping into this meeting and just voicing some frustrations, but we're getting to the short strokes here, and they need to be on record. Um, some very important things are being missed. Upper Carmi, Selican has very poor water, they need to join the city of Penticton in a boundary reorganization. And I'm representing my neighbors here. I really, um, you know, if I'm not making friends in this room, that's okay, I'm representing my neighborhood. And so that's something that's very critical to us, is that Selican gets potable water rather than, uh, trucking water up the hill. That has to be included in the boundary organization. The second thing that has to be included is we've got a racetrack on this hill that really had some challenges this week with local governance. And, um, we need to bring that local governance of governance a little closer to home, so that we can make decisions based on our community, not based on, um, what shoe shop region would have liked to have done, or what some other areas would have liked to have done. I believe that we kind of lost our way a little bit here, and there were some some backroom agendas that kind of took over. And, um, we didn't, uh, hold true to what this study was supposed to supposed to do. And I'm going to have to now go back and feel embarrassed that I brought up, uh, points and and things that were already brought up in this meeting by reviewing the meeting later today, but in a desperate attempt to get these things on record, I had to make them known tonight, so I have to apologize for that. Um, omitting the opinions of anyone outside of O'Kay Falls if we do a referendum is non-democratic. That's not the purpose, we're supposed to look out for everyone in this region. Um, I would really like to support, um, O'Kay Falls, uh, being, uh, uh, stepping aside from the RDOS, but I don't think that, um, the RDOS gets the opportunity to hold on to the mill rate for them, some of the highest valued properties in the value are valued properties in the in the valley in order to do it. That's not appropriate. Um, again, I apologize for being late to the race, and I know I just finished in last, and I'll review what, uh, what happened tonight, but I just wanted that on record. Matt, I appreciate you giving me a moment to just voice my opinion.
Okay. Um, thanks, Kurt. We will go back to the agenda item, which was comments on the survey. Jim Zaffino. Oh, I think Jim Zaffino is just waving goodbye. Okay.
Yeah.
Mylene. Go ahead, Mylene.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Sorry about that. Um, I have a couple of things, um, on the survey, I will send just an email directly to Sherry, it's a couple little tiny grammatical things. But one thing of of concern to me was the map link, it works, it takes you to the ARDOs maps, but it, there was no clear indication as to what to click on once you got to that maps dot RDOS, so maybe that's just not ready yet. Sherry?
Yeah, uh, sorry, yeah, the link was just in there, so we remembered to put it in, but none of that is up, and, um, yeah. So that that will be, by the time we get the survey out, that will be corrected, but yes, the the, uh, we hadn't, we hadn't worked on that part, yeah.
Thank you, I'll send you an email on the side with a couple little minor things, thank you.
Awesome, awesome, thank you.
Quick comment from myself on page one of the, uh, accompanying document. Um, just, you've got the box around the incorporation study, and I think that's great, but can you just flag that that's a next step in that process? Any other comments or questions? Sorry?
No, I was just gonna say, you bet, yeah, Sherry's got to go now, so so I'll just hang on, yeah.
Are you able to hang on a few minutes longer?
You bet.
Because we have some questions from the public. McLean Creek Road in your list, um, can we just sort of define from where to where? Thanks. I'll leave it at that for now. Any other comments from anyone else?
Yeah, are you taking questions from the public matter?
We will be very shortly, Brian.
Okay, I'll hold off, and I just had a couple of comments.
Yeah. Any other comments from the committee? Eleanor, I don't know if you're shrugging your shoulders or getting ready to say something, looking for the mute button. No, okay, all right, moving on then, I will open the, uh, shoot, next steps. Alan?
Okay, um, just in
I got you, Calvin, there's others.
Yeah, just in terms of the scheduling update there?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, thank you, let me just put this on very quickly. Um, schedule update, so the current meeting schedule, we've got, um, confirming whether the survey can be released on May sixteen, thirty-first, so we'd like to get that out in kind of the second half of of May. Uh, the need, the possible need for a an extra community meeting, or, uh, it's committee meeting, excuse me, and, um, and that could, we've got a community association meeting coming up, I think, and June eighth meeting to review survey feedback, so on June eighth, uh, we are anticipating getting the committee back together, uh, to review the, all of the feedback that comes in from the survey that's sent out in the in the last two weeks, on the sixteenth, with the with the return date of May thirty-first. So that's kind of, that's where we're going from from this point. And I think that's pretty much it then, that, I'll just close this.
Okay. So our next meeting being June eighth, at which point you'd have results of the survey?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Right. Um, yeah, we've just lost David. Uh, okay, any other comments regarding next steps, Phyllis?
I'm just wondering with what, uh, Kurt has put on the table is if we need to have a meeting to discuss those issues, I think he had some valid points. And, uh, you know, that's the whole idea of bringing things to the table, and we work as a team, we're a team here. We're all trying to work towards the same thing. And, uh, I know that, uh, you know, we we have a timeline, and I I'm a little concerned that Kurt came, you know, kind of last minute to the table, but I still think his issues are important enough that there is something that we need to discuss as a group. And is there a way that we can make that happen? Just so that we have, uh, we can appear as, uh, you know, um, consensual as a group when we, when we bring our, our, uh, our findings forward to the public. So that's my question.
Okay. I'm just thinking that a lot of Kurt's comments were more to do with, uh, I'm not sure that they were to do with the survey. And so I guess I'm wondering if we did have another meeting. Do you see that it would slow the survey? Or it's more on governance of this committee?
I think the survey needs to include the pertinent pertinent points, and where if we're missing something, we need to include it now before a survey is sent out. If we don't give the the opportunity for the public to address the points, um, that are pertinent to each individual community, then what's used is the survey.
I I agree with Kurt, I don't think we need to be slaves to a deadline, this is too important.
Okay. So you'd like another meeting before the survey goes out? What sort of timeframe do you think you need? And do we really need input from consultants at that meeting, or is it a meeting amongst ourselves?
I think it might be a meeting just amongst the committee members.
I'm actually not sure that we can do that. Uh, an in-camera meeting that way, um, but we can certainly have a meeting and just have that discussion. Okay, so, uh, I've got, I think I've got the basis of a motion on the floor that we have another meeting.
I'll second.
Okay.
Well, I need somebody to make it.
I move it, I move it.
Okay, Phyllis is moving that we have another meeting.
I second.
I think is seconding it.
Yeah.
Um, just from a purp- perspective of discussion, like, could we have this next week?
Sure.
Okay. Um, Mylene?
If I understand this correct, an additional meeting, and this would affect the survey that goes out, it needs to be sooner than later, and definitely the consultants need to be included as it would affect the survey that they're preparing. That's my comment.
Okay, yeah. And I think Kate and Phyllis both straightened me out on that one, so I've been straightened out by everybody now. Um, do you want to have it sooner than next week?
I'll make myself available any night this week or next week for that meeting.
Okay. Does somebody want to volunteer to do a doodle?
Uh, maybe we can get the regional district to do that, Matt, I'm thinking, maybe if we can pass on tomorrow, we'll communicate with, uh, Christie.
Okay. Okay, so look for, um, look for something from Christie or RDOS staff with a view to having another meeting.
On the floor.
Sorry, yeah, right, we haven't, thank you, we need to, we need to call the question, any further discussion? Phyllis, go ahead.
Might it be possible to have a face-to-face meeting?
Please.
Fine, Bubby. Okay.
Can we get some input from, uh, I'm not sure how many people are on the meeting tonight, but um, I'm just wondering if there are some other people who might want to just weigh in on this quickly.
Kay says she's game for a face-to-face meeting.
I would prefer a face-to-face meeting personally.
So I think we're steering for a face-to-face meeting ASAP. Yeah. Are we ready to call a question now? Without trying to rush you. Okay.
Do we?
Sorry, Kurt, go ahead.
Do we need a motion?
Uh, you've got a motion, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're just waiting for the doodle, is the doodle going to, uh, suggest dates?
Well, there's only five in the next, in the remaining week, so.
Okay, I need a little more enthusiasm, Matt, what date do you want to make?
I thought we were gonna have that done by the doodle, guys, you know, like, I mean, uh, yeah, I thought, I thought we agreed, I thought somebody suggested that staff would put out a doodle.
Okay.
You know? Alrighty, good. Ron, go ahead. Ron?
Yeah, it just takes a second to unmute, Matt, thank you. Uh, I I just want to bring everyone's attention, it it's relevant, uh, partly. I I I received emails during the course of this meeting. Some from people I don't know, but I suspect if I'm getting three, there's many more than three who have the same concern. And 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 this one that came at six-ten, it said, hi, we tried to attend the Zoom meeting scheduled for May four for boundary configuration, both times, four-thirty and then six PM. First, I received message saying meeting was rescheduled for May fourth, and it changed from, again, uh, from six to four-thirty, we're residents of Skaha Estates. We are looking forward to attend the meeting. What happened? And then there's a name, then I have another, uh, ju- just bear with me, it'll take a second, I think it's better if I just share them, then then privately, uh, take on the, uh, the questions that I can't answer. Uh, I have one here from, uh, a fellow who who is, uh, impacted. Uh, says, hi, Ron, here's a good way to make sure they don't actually get any concerned community members present. I got two notifications this morning, each with different times on them, six and four-thirty for a Zoom meeting this evening. Schedule at the time, anyone with kids is getting ready for supper and bedtimes. This isn't the first time I've received last-minute notice for meetings. As you know from our discussion, this is likely to significantly impact us and our immediate neighbors, because we will be cut out of community. How are we supposed to have any input, uh, in the process with this kind of nonsense? Who's responsible for the invitations to these community meetings? Now, this is feedback, uh, Who's responsible for the invitations to these community meetings? Now, this is feedback and and it's a it's a winery owner that's on the boundary. And if they're in or out, isn't the point. They have neighbors who care and and expressing that feedback. Another one that's related is and this is on a chain that includes this one I just read. It says, same for me, Ron. What is going on? Question mark. I'm sure you've heard from other McLean Creek Road owners and stakeholders too about the boundary issue. Is there merit in having a meeting with all of them with RDOS present to hear concerns firsthand? There has been no consultation with them other than your phone calls. I also understand that the consultants tasked with developing boundary options never visited this area. Is that true? If it is, it's an absolute disgrace. Now, I get this feedback. And and it's painful because I, you know, this committee needs to hear. And and I don't know who's to respond to it. But I get a lot of feedback that is important. And when we're getting feedback on people, this is, these are all two of those are McLean Creek Road area, one is Skaha Estates. So I want to share that because these meetings matter to the people who live here. They they really matter and they really want to be involved. And and when I'm getting that kind of communication, I want to be blunt. This isn't about me. You know, this isn't me. They're they're talking about they want better notice, better process. So I share that with the chair and the staff and the consultants because it's valuable feedback. I I know I care and I want to hear it, and I just thought it would be fair to share it with you. Thank you.
So and and there have been difficulties in getting accurate information about meetings out. And we're about to schedule a meeting with, at the end of it, by the time we select the day, we'll have about three days notice. So we're about to do it again. But anyway, I'd like to call the question. All those in favor of the motion, which I'm paraphrasing because it was ten minutes ago, that we're going to have another meeting at the first opportunity made by Phyllis, seconded by Kurt. Additional information is that there's a doodle going out very shortly and that it will be in person. If we can do it, so, okay. Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Now I gotta see whether who we have left on the committee. David. David, is your hand up or down? It's not up. Okay.
It's down.
Okay, good enough. I'm looking for votes here. Phyllis, Mylene, myself, Eleanor? Nope. Oh, okay, yeah, because I thought I'd seen your hand up. All right. Those against? Bob and David? Any abstains? Sorry, Kay, I don't know whether you're in, out, or just a second. Kay, are you?
I, yeah, sorry, I'm with running over. There's some things I'm trying to get done in the background while I'm listening. Yes, I'm in favor. I did send you an aye.
Good. I missed that. Yep. All right, so that motion's carried, I believe, four or five to two. Okay. All right. What's next? Next steps are done. Question period for those that are left from the general public. Brent, you've been waiting patiently. Actually, Brent, with all due respect, I believe I have Kelvin on first. Go ahead, Kelvin.
Mr. Chair, listening to the the meeting for the last two and two and a half, two and three quarter hours. Put it very bluntly, it has been painful with the with a request for a proposal, terms of reference that from what I'm reading, it looks like there was a predetermination as to what, you know, what the rules and regulations were as to who to include and who not to include. Looking at simple example would be the three roads on on East East Side Road. Property values and taxation isn't sufficient really to to cover the road maintenance. These are decisions and the same from McLean Creek Road. Yes, you know, thirty properties, fifteen individual properties that are farm status. It's nice to know that we do not have the ability to be able to determine whether we want to pay the additional taxes to become part of the the community. Myself, if it, you know, if it meant, you know, meant a you know, a couple of hundred extra dollars on my property tax to, you know, to be part of Okanagan Falls and contribute to the falls, the way that most of the farm families on McLean Creek Road have have done. I wouldn't have any problem with it. But to be excluded because the the consultants have determined that it's not in our best interest. It's almost like a overbearing parent who tells their sixteen year old son or daughter, you can't go out driving tonight because it's raining and we're making the decision for you. I find that very offensive. And for the committee as a whole, not to have raised this with the consultants, I'm very, very disappointed. I've sent in two email letters. And hopefully, everybody on the committee has had the opportunity to read them. I was being as polite as possible. It took me a couple of days to read or to write each one of them. First drafts of each were not very nice, to say the least. My background was thirty years with the federal government. Request for a proposal, terms of reference, and giving people an opportunity to make their decision for themselves was always there. My feeling right now is if the committee as a whole decides that McLean Creek Road is not viable without giving us an opportunity to to vote on whether we want to be included and want to pay the additional taxes. I can guarantee that most of us will be taking our business to Pen Ticton. We will be boycotting most things in Okanagan Falls, even though we have contributed significantly to the falls. So if if we're not given the opportunity and the Big Brother decides that we are not worthy because we might have to pay additional taxes, I'm just going to say shame on everybody that is involved. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelvin. Next. Other comments from Brent?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to thank Alan and this group here for the boundary presentations and the options. They make a lot more sense after that presentation to me. What what really jumped out was the area and the assessment rates, they pretty well match for the four for four options. That makes a lot of sense. I don't know if that's ironic or that was part of part of the recommendations. And I guess that kind of falls in line with, you know, some of these smaller subdivisions. Even though they pay a higher assessment, if you look at at the bigger picture, the overall picture, in the end, the assessment rates balance out per area, per hectare. And I guess the it sounded like there was a lot of issues around some of these, a few key fringe areas. And I I guess it's a question for the consultants again. Would it be possible to do like a survey? You know, of of these cert, these various areas and 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 do the survey and then based on majority of residents in these areas, add them or take them away from the area because there's there's, you know, not that many residents in these fringe areas. And I I think that would maybe accommodate some of the the concerns, like I sat through the two hours here. And it seems there's a couple fringe areas and they're they're the areas that are causing the committee the most grief. And just one other comment that kind of really based on Ron's comments around communications and the benefits of municipal grants. Like, it sounded like some of the other communities, they didn't get to the actual assessment because people were worried about higher taxes. If they could put that in the survey, maybe there's some kind of ratio, you know, grants that benefit municipalities. You know, maybe there's there's some kind of number that, you know, if it's just the initial, you know, increase of taxes that are, that's going to cause concern to residents. It's it 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 makes sense to have, you know, have the residents understand that there is good potential for grants, right, becoming a municipality? And that's really not indicated anywhere. So those were just a few comments, observations that I got from the meeting, really appreciated the option, ability to participate, Matt, on the call. Thank you.
Thanks, Brent. Remaining comments or questions? Murray, Judy? Do either of you wish to make comments, Murray or Judy? Going once? Okay. I'll assume that's no for both of you. Yeah, I this real learning experience. You know, I we're near the end of the agenda here. Before I hand it over to Ron for some closing comments, which we do at the end of every meeting. I'd like to thank our consultants for their presentation. I'd like to just phrase where I see where we're at. And I, you know, I'm clearly not got the same view as as some others, but I viewed the survey as an opportunity to test what the data tells us. And you know, you wouldn't want to interpret or twist that data too much before you put it out to the general public to comment on. And so you know, I personally, and and I've talked with people up McLean Creek Road, I've talked with six people. One of them is adamant to be included. The other five are very lukewarm. And they want to see, okay, falls, go ahead. But whether they're inside or outside, honestly, if they were outside, they said, you know, it it's just really not going to affect us that much. So I saw the survey as an opportunity to test what the data tells us. And I naively thought people would not take offense at putting out what the data says. A learning experience. Anyway, those those are my two bets worth. And before I move on to Ron, we do have someone else here calling. I know you had your hand up earlier. If you're still anywhere close to the mic and and want to ask your question now or make your comment, I'd certainly welcome it.
Good evening, everybody. It has been a long meeting, but I want to say it's always easy to say no. And it's really hard to say yes, because yes involves work. And I don't know that I'm pro or con the incorporation, but this work is really valuable work. And a lot of the people who spoke tonight have strong opinions. But maybe now we understand why Blind River Srento said, no, it's easier. And this is hard work and it's hard to get everybody to come in line, but it's worthwhile. So good on all of you to stick through this meeting and chat about it and figure these things out. This is hard, hard work, but really worthwhile. So thank you all of you for all you've done.
Okay, thank you, Colleen. Ron, over to you.
Yes, and thank you so much, Matt. And Colleen, really well said. I I think you hit a home run with that point. It is hard work and the people in Area D care. This is serious business. It's been over fifty five years since the Regional District was established. This is a once in a long time opportunity. Just to pick up on Matt's comment, I spoke to seven people in McLean Creek Road area just recently. Every one of them wants to be included. And I can give you names and dates and people and history and what they said. I've talked to many people in Upper Carmi. I've talked to people in all the areas being excluded and and people within the areas that are included. I want to remind the committee, this is a phase one. This is not a phase two. This is not the voting phase. This is not yes or no to incorporation. I know the people in our Area D. I trust them. I believe if if we go with the two tier approach, a boundary properly chosen. And then if there's one area excluded, Upper Carmi, or there's two or even three, it's not a lot of work. It's not a lot of money. I know Jim Zaffino has left the meeting, but I know he can crunch the numbers. This is not that hard. We're we're not that big of an area. But I trust the democratic process. I trust, I know the people who live here. Give them good information, accurate, complete, trust them. And I'll tell you, if the people of Upper Carmi agree they don't want to be in, they'll vote accordingly. And the same with McLean Creek Road. But don't take that choice away from them. That is, we've already heard tonight from more than one community member expressed concern. I hear it a lot. I heard it before I was elected. I heard it after I was elected in Upper Carmi on specific issues. It comes down to communications. It comes down to information. It is hard work. I have a lot of decades of experience dealing with difficult legal issues, giving counsel and helping people through difficult process. Process matters. It has to be fair. And you have to give people the proper information and opportunity. And I'll tell you, I have heard a lot of disappointment in terms of not feeling welcome at 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 various events we've had. Covid is a is a is a is a complicator, and I get that. I am suggesting we can do better and 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 the community deserves better. And and I've I've been told by by somebody that they're sorry that I'm so difficult to please. And I am difficult to please, and I'm not sorry. I care about everybody in Area D. I care that they get a fair listen, a fair choice. And I don't want to see anybody going through this process feeling like they haven't been received and given that fair process. So I I I'm going to end there, but thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak.
I did it. Somebody had to do it. Beaking, carrying on a conversation with mute still on. Alan, anything that I've missed?
I don't think so, Matt. No.
Okay. All right. Thank you, folks. Look for a doodle poll for a meeting coming out very shortly. Have a good night. Thank you.